Good afternoon. At this time, I will call our City Council Work Session to order. Be advised that Councilmember Bennett has communicated that he will be arriving late. First item will be an overview of the 2025 General Assembly Session. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. With us this afternoon will be Senator Emily Jordan, Delegate Daenerys Clark, and Mindy Carlin, CEO of Access Point Public Affairs, our legislative liaison. Senator Jordan and Delegate Clark were instrumental in the city's success this past General Assembly Session, specifically that relates to the state funding for the Camp Community College Workforce Center and also the city's homeless shelter. Mindy will provide an overview of the actions of the General Assembly for us, and following her, we hope to have some comments from Senator Jordan and Delegate Clark. Mindy?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy to be here today to give an update on what was by and large a successful session with respect to city priorities. And so you may recall, we organized our priorities for 2025 a little bit differently, and so that will, my presentation will align with how we structured our priorities, beginning with funding priorities, then legislative initiatives, and then action on some of the other legislative policy positions that council identified. So as the manager noted, the city of Suffolk is in a partnership with Camp Community College to develop the Workforce Trades and Innovation Center. This, as you guys are all well aware, will focus on strengthening the talent pipeline, specifically in maritime infrastructure, logistics, and warehousing. We were very pleased to be able to work with members of our delegation and others in the General Assembly to get support for our requested $750,000 in state funding to help support the city's share of this partnership. As you may recall, we worked on this last session and weren't able to bring it, get it done at the end of the day, but we're very happy this session resulted in securing that funding. In addition, we came requesting a budget amendment to help support the Western Tidewater Regional Homeless Shelter. I've included a brief description, but you guys are well aware of this, so I won't walk through what the city is working on, relying on both ARPA funding, local funding, and now $500,000 in state funding that we were able to secure with the support of our delegation members. So this was another significant win this session. As we looked at our legislative initiatives this year, we really had a few areas of focus. The first, again, was an effort that we had undertaken last session. We shifted gears on this a little bit, and we're able to be successful. And this is to increase the city's authority to deter repeat zoning violators. And so you guys have all, I'm certain, experienced challenges where your constituents are impacted by those around them who are not in compliance with the zoning ordinance. This is particularly challenging with nonpermitted commercial uses, so that's how we focused the legislative item that we brought forward this year, which Senator Angela Williams-Greaves carried. What we were able to get support for was maintaining the initial fine for a violation at $200, but then have subsequent increases from 500 to 1,000 for the second offense, and then to 1,500 for any subsequent offense. Staff also indicated a challenge in those situations where the individual who is cited chooses to waive the trial and simply pay the fines. There was nothing in the code that clearly stated the period of time within which they needed to remedy that situation. If they were to go to court, then the judge determines that, and so we also added to the legislation a provision that allowed the locality to set that in those cases where a trial is waived. The provisions of this legislation apply only to localities in Hampton Roads, which is also different, and I think helped us get this over the finish line this session, and again, is limited just to nonpermitted commercial uses. So this legislation was passed and was signed by the governor. The next priority that we identified, this was also an initiative that we had last session. Unfortunately, I don't have the news I had hoped on this. We had a very strong showing of support for legislation that would allow at a local option localities to provide enhanced retirement benefits for 911 dispatchers. We all know the important role that they play, really as true first responders, and however, are not entitled to, localities don't have the ability to offer the enhanced retirement benefits that firefighters, police, and others are able to offer. And so the legislation that we brought forward with support from Delegate Clark in our delegation, Senator Jordan, and others listed on the slide, unfortunately, that legislation did not advance. You may recall last session, the concerns that were raised were concerns about having this enhanced retirement for local dispatchers, but not state dispatchers. We were able to address that concern, however, new concerns were raised. So this is certainly one that we'll have to take, really kind of sharpen our pencils, so to speak, and come up with a creative way to give these folks who are really providing invaluable service to the community the benefits and compensation that they deserve so that we can retain them and be cognizant of that role that they play. Action on legislative policy positions. So I've organized these by kind of topic areas. We have them organized. So these were areas where they weren't primary priorities, where we brought forward legislation or a budget item of our own, but were identified as important to the community and where we actively engaged. The first, and the city manager and I and the police chief got to spend a lot of quality time this session on legislation with respect to speed cameras. Suffolk is the only locality of our size that has both a speed camera in construction, in work zones, and school zones. And so any kind of perceptions that folks have with respect to those speed cameras, Suffolk is kind of front in center. And so that happened this session. Legislation was introduced that would have really done some things that would have been damaging to the program. We worked very hard, and again, the manager and the police chief came down on numerous occasions to really talk about the good that our program's doing, the data that shows how the incidents, both the incidence of speeding significantly decrease over time, which is exactly what we want the speed cameras doing, but also the severity of accidents are all decreasing. So this gave us a chance to really spotlight how the programs can work. We were able to help address some of the really concerning things that the legislators were proposing, like reducing the fines. We were able to get that written out of the bill. There was also a provision to significantly restrict how those funds could be used, and even to have all, the majority of those funds stay with the state as opposed to stay in the locality where the violations occurred. We were able to get that out of the bill that passed. And so ultimately, the bill that passed and went to the governor was one that really addressed all of our significant concerns as a city, and so we saw that as a victory. Ultimately, the governor decided not to sign that bill. He did veto it, so it didn't go into effect, but it certainly gave us an opportunity to talk about our program, to move legislators to a more reasonable approach. I do expect this will come back in future sessions, and we'll be ready to continue as we need to, to represent the city's interests so these speed cameras can be, continue to be effective in our community from a safety standpoint. There was some legislation, kind of like similar legislation with respect to automatic license plate readers. Again, the term legislators use were guardrails around those programs so that, you know, there was trust in that they are not being abused. We also played a role in trying to amend, working to amend legislation with respect to this, which we were successful in. Again, ultimately, this legislation passed and was sent to the governor, but was also vetoed. So this is something we'll be watching. So nothing will change with respect to the current code on both speed cameras and on automatic license plate readers, which are being used for really important things in our community. Another priority in the public safety space was protecting the ability for juvenile detention facilities. We, of course, have a project that, where we are assessing the needs, and here in Suffolk, this is a significant challenge that we've had in having a place to send juvenile, folks who need to go to juvenile detention. Legislation was introduced by a member of the Senate that would have directed the closure and consolidation and really further constrained the juvenile detention facilities that we have in the Commonwealth. That would have certainly been really concerning. It was something we expressed concern about, and ultimately, that bill failed to advance. There were a number of budget actions, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. You will all get this slide deck, and it has links to each of these. I pulled a few highlights that I knew would be of interest to council and to the community. Funding for, increased funding for reimbursement, local law enforcement for, in those cases of TDOs and ECOs. We know this is something really significant that pulls officers off of other things in the public safety arena, and so to the extent we can help offset those costs, that's important. There was a budget item related to workers' compensation benefits for PTSD, anxiety and depressive disorder for law enforcement and firefighters. The process by which local and regional jail renovation, expansion, and construction is considered and reviewed was changed, and so that's something that we wanted to flag for you. And then the Compensation Board, in conjunction with the Board of Local and Regional Jails, was directed to survey to identify the jail staffing and space impacts of making inmates available to appear in virtual court hearings. So recognizing this may impact the Western Tidewater Regional Jail, we flagged this as well as a budget action of potential interest. In the education space, legislation passed once again this session that would have provided a local option for all of the localities across the Commonwealth for school construction funding. You may recall that there are a number of localities that have this ability now, but it is not available to locality statewide. This bill, as it happened last session, was passed by the General Assembly, but was vetoed by the governor, and that's the outcome that happened on this legislation this year as well. A couple things that I'll highlight in the budget area for education. 200, that was included in the final budget that was passed, 222.9 million to fund state-recognized school support positions, a 3% salary increase each year of the biennium was included, funding for a one-time payment of $1,000 for a bonus for funded SOQ instructional positions. And with this, I wanted to highlight that this passed with language stating that there would be no local match required, and really gives the discretion on how to use that funding for bonuses up to the locality. 52.8 million to increase state percent for special education students was another budget item that I wanted to highlight. So shifting to the category of finance and regulations, there were a number of bills that would, that raised concerns for us with respect to local taxing authority. These are lists, some of the highlights here that we raised concerns about are listed, and fortunately, none of them advanced, and so we were pleased with those outcomes for those bills and resolutions that were proposed. There was a bill that I wanted to flag in this area that deals with the ability of businesses to deduct their gross receipts attributed to business conducted in another state or foreign country from taxation under the B-Pole tax. Obviously, anything that is done to change what the locality can do with respect to the B-Pole funding is going to be impactful to you unless you're given some other mechanism to replace any funding that goes away. Ultimately, a work group, rather than have legislation directing a change, the legislation was amended and converted to a study so that the full implications of this bill could be more fully evaluated and examined. So that didn't pass, but we'll certainly be closely monitoring that work group so that we're prepared for the coming session. In this category as well, there were a number of bills introduced related to collective bargaining that would have restricted and changed the locality's flexibility with respect to collective bargaining for your employees as well as for the employees of contractors you work with. A number of these bills did pass and were sent to the governor, but those were vetoed, so they did not go into effect, will not go into effect. Shifting to community development and planning, as usual, we're very much focused on protecting local land use authority and preserving that, and so there were a number of bills that would have made changes, that would in one way or another have restricted or changed, taken away your flexibility or authority. Fortunately, most all of those bills did fail to advance, and so that was a positive outcome for us. There were several other land use and zoning bills that were proposed that, where we expressed concern. I highlighted just a few here. One would have removed the Planning Commission and Governing Body Approval Authority for any administrative review process for Platts and plans, as well as expedited the review process and shortening the timeframe for review. That legislation did not advance. There was legislation proposed that would have prohibited localities from requiring a traffic study as a condition of approval for any rezoning application that included either a single-family or multifamily residential use of fewer than 50 units. Again, we wanted to preserve local land use authority. That was ultimately not successful. And then the last I highlighted would have provided that a locality's comprehensive plan couldn't constitute the basis for disapproval of a site plan or other administrative approval if it is otherwise in conformity with duly adopted standards, ordinances, and statutes. That may be the choice that you make, but we did not want that to be uniformly enforced across the board, so to maintain that authority that you have at the local level. There was one piece of legislation that we, as well as our colleagues with other localities, were not thrilled with. It will be impactful to the locality, was HB 2660. This included a number of provisions that have to do with our local government approval processes. So this legislation was passed. It shortens the timeframe for various local government approvals. It directs the Code Commission, which is a state commission, to convene a work group with various stakeholders, and localities will be represented in that work group, to review provisions related to submission, review, approval of subdivision Platts and site plans. The focus really is on process improvements, clarity, standardization, eliminating redundant or duplicative processes. What we were hoping for was that the work group would do its work, and then legislation would advance that incorporated their recommendations, as opposed to have this go into effect and have that review happen concurrently. Ultimately, the General Assembly did not agree with us. They did support this legislation, and it was passed and signed by the governor. That Code Commission will be submitting a report on its recommendations by November 1st of this year, and we'll be closely monitoring that and any impacts it has on the locality, on the city. I know that preserving the program related to funding for African-American cemeteries is a significant priority for the city of Suffolk. I'm pleased to share that funding for this program was increased by 750,000 in the budget that was approved. This brings the total state investment in this program to $1 million over the biennium, and the governor did, while he, in his initial set of recommendations, had proposed eliminating this funding increase, the legislature did not concur with that recommendation, and ultimately, it was included in the budget that passed. There was also legislation that passed that was introduced by Senator Danica Rome that does require localities to adopt an ordinance setting forth a register of identified cemeteries, graveyards, or other places of burial located on private property not belonging to any memorial or monumental association. So under current law, localities are permitted, but not required to pass an ordinance on this. And so this bill does have a delayed effective date, July 1, 2026. A couple things I'll highlight in the community development and planning category with respect to the budget. An additional $20 million was included for the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. A shift in funding was made for the VADI program, which is in support of broadband investment, and there was language included, while the budget is only a two-year budget, there was language stating that it's the intent of the General Assembly that that funding be continued into the next biennium. There were also $13 million in grants to localities or planning commissions that have or will establish by December 31st of this year. A local housing trust fund was included in the budget, and that also included language directing the Department of Housing and Community Development to develop criteria and guidelines for those one-time results, or one-time grants by August 1st of this year. Environment utilities. So here, there was legislation that would have created an electric vehicle rural infrastructure program and fund to help assist private developers with a portion of the nonutility cost for installation of electric charging stations. This would have been on eligible public land or within one mile of the boundary of eligible public land. This bill was passed, but was vetoed by Governor Youngkin. A couple budget items in this category I wanted to highlight. $40 million was included for Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. $27 million in new funding was included for agricultural best management practices for the biennium, so this takes that number, that is in addition to the 201 million that was already included in this budget. And then there was also language directing the Secretary of Natural and Historic Resources to establish a work group to review the Water Quality Improvement Fund and make recommendations regarding its organizational structure, what would happen with that funding, and feasibility of incorporation of the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. So anytime there's any kind of proposal that has to do with local funding or local control, we watch that very closely, so I wanted to flag that so that you would be aware. The last category, actually, second to last, is transportation. There was one bill in particular that we tracked this session that would have created the Hampton Roads Highway Program and the Hampton Roads Resilience Programs. As originally introduced, this would have created a 3.3% retail sales and use tax that would be imposed by each of the localities within Hampton Roads, that would be deposited into these two new funds that would be used for, the purposes for each are highlighted on the slide. That was how the bill was introduced. As the bill moved through the process, the funding portion of that bill was stripped, and so the legislation that ultimately passed and was sent to the governor would have established those programs, but not funded them. When that did get to the governor, he vetoed that as well. This is another bill that I expect will see in some form or fashion come forward, and certainly, any, with all of the needs within the city of Suffolk and around the city of Suffolk, the secondary roads, this would have been a way to generate some additional funding for those priorities. So we'll watch for this in the coming year. A couple, Health and Human Resources budget items that I wanted to highlight for you. There was language included in the budget that passed that requires local governments to maintain local contributions to CSBs year to year, absent any extreme hardship. And so that is a change that takes away some of your flexibility with respect to the level of funding that you give to your CSB unless you're able to really show a financial hardship, which is defined in that language. 8.7 million was included in the budget to hire additional support coordinators at the CSBs to ensure that those individuals receiving a developmental disability waiver are able to get timely access to services. 100.3 million in general funds over the biennium were included for CSA caseload and cost increases. Language was included in the ultimate budget that will require the Department of Social Services to assess the feasibility of requiring local DSS offices to apply for federal benefits for foster children. And so a report on that is expected by November 1st. And then finally, $25 million in FY 2025 was included for drinking water grants to localities to upgrade or replace existing drinking water infrastructure. So I have a summary slide for each of our items here. So with respect to funding priorities and our top legislative initiatives, you see we have wins with respect to the Workforce Trades and Innovation Center and the Western Tidewater Homeless Shelter. We were also really pleased with the result on the repeat zoning violation tools. Unfortunately, the enhanced retirement benefit was not one I could put a checkmark by this session, and then did just a similar checklist that I won't repeat in the other areas for just your quick reference. And so I know we have, I believe we have, yes, I know, we have members of our delegation here who I'm certain you would much rather hear from. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions or let us hear from them, and then I can answer questions, whatever your preference is.
I think, if you don't mind, to recognize-
Absolutely.
Senator Jordan, Delegate Clark, thank you for being here. But, Mindy, if I get you back up here, let me, let council see if they have any questions or comments in particular on your presentation, and then we can go ahead and move on. Stay where you are.
I will stay where I am for a minute. Yes.
Stay where you is. So with that being said, council, do you have any questions or comments from Ms. Carlin? Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. Sometimes your talking is faster than my hearing.
I'm so sorry.
That's not a problem.
I know you have more important to hear, more important folks to hear from tonight, so...
But just going back to the speed camera thing.
Yes, sir.
So basically, things stay the same. Does the money still, I know the issue was primarily the money going to the state-
That was certainly a big issue.
-rather than staying here. So is that going to happen, or is the money staying here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the legislation did not pass. It did not, it passed, but the governor vetoed it, and so everything will stay the way that it is for us.
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
And one other question, on the 911 dispatcher thing.
Yes.
It seems a little bit like we're kind of playing whack-a-mole, you know, with that thing. Is there some inherent, dislike may not be the right word, but is there some inherent lack of appetite for getting that passed by the legislature in the state that it is going to be hard to overcome, do you think?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. And I, I'm certain that both Senator Jordan and Delegate Clark, who worked really hard on that, will have comments as well. I think that there is, I'm safe in saying that there's definitely a commitment and a recognition of the importance of our 911 dispatchers. I think the concern is really one of how action with respect to our local dispatchers will impact retirement for others, both that are having enhanced retirement benefits now, as well as who may in the future. And so, as I said, I think Senator Jordan will likely want to speak to this a little bit, but I think we'll be, as well as Delegate Clark, but we'll, we definitely need to regroup because it is exactly, we felt the same way. Your term whack-a-mole very much feels like it, but I just want, I want members of the public, members of the community, and certainly the dispatchers that know, to know that the General Assembly values what they do. It really is a dollars and cents thing and very much staff-driven, staff at the state, money committees, the concerns. So I think we're going to have to get creative. Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I just have a couple comments before we move forward. Number one, rather busy session. I appreciate all the assistance that you've provided and guidance, and of course, our legislators that are here, it doesn't happen without them also. But all in all, I would say it was a pretty successful session, and a lot of these items, I'm sure Senator Jordan and Delegate Clark will speak to them also. This, the speed camera issue, when it first came up, seemed like it was a little trying, but as it turned out, the city of Suffolk really was the poster child for speed cameras and how the money's being utilized, because one of the main points of contention was directing where those funds would be spent. And we actually were already doing, and had been doing, and have been doing since the implementation of the speed cameras, designating those funds specifically for and only for public safety issues. And because of that, I think it helped, I think it helped immensely that it didn't go much further because the legislators and the governor were able to see that this program can work and be beneficial as far as reducing speed, which it greatly did in our case, and also the use of the funds being put back into the community for public safety purposes. So I think that was kind of a feather in our hat. We talked about, in regards to that, I know there was sometime, there was some discussion of being able to expand the parameters for the speed cameras so they could be outside of work zones and outside of school zones. I think one of them was in any traffic corridor for a certain distance of a fatality and that sort of thing. Was there any serious- Was there any serious discussion about that, do you know?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. So I think that there were definitely, there definitely were bills that were introduced and discussion. I think there's a divide in the perspectives among the legislators. So members of the Senate, generally speaking, not, not all, but had more concerns with respect to expanding the program, including the patron of the Senate bill, Senator Angela Williams Graves. The House bill, at least the reason the patron and other supporters of that House bill gave for wanting to add guardrails was so that the program could be expanded. And so their argument was that we need to make sure that there's trust in how this program's being used, that the, and it's not being used, they called it profit policing was a term that was used, and that these guardrails were needed so that the program could expand. So I think there is interest in that. How that shakes out politically, you know, will probably be influenced by who, who has the numbers in the House and the Senate, but there definitely was interest among legislate, some legislators to expand the program. And, and talking about how our program is working with real data was certainly helpful at making the case.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just, of course, there's a lot we can talk about, but the three tenths of a cent tax increase, that could have been allowed for the Hampton Roads region to address secondary roads. I mean, it also comes with the recommendation and unanimous approval of the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, so this wasn't strictly a Suffolk initiative. It did go through TPO and has the support of everybody in the region. And my experience, if that does come about, I think it would, you know, obviously Suffolk's size and Suffolk's number of secondary roads, it would behoove us to continue to, you know, champion that particular initiative. And I'm a little, well, they, I guess we kind, they kind of did and kind of didn't, said it was a good idea, but we're not gonna figure out how we're gonna fund it yet. And we thought, and I believe the way it was presented is that the three tenths of a cent was a suggestion as to how it could be done, not a etched in stone, you know, this, this is an idea, this is a way, this is an option. And of course, if, if state funding would provide for all of it, then that would be fine, or a combination thereof. But at least we started the discussion, and hopefully next year we'll be able to get a little bit more traction on it. Hopefully, we'll be able to get something done. In the big scheme of things, I don't think it's a lot of money for our citizens. And my experience, I think if we stopped 10 citizens on the street and said, you know, would you have any objection to three tenths of one penny being added to your sales tax if we can address some of these traffic and road issues that we're having? I would venture to say, I'm not a gambling guy, but it's, it's gonna be nine out of 10, if not more. So I'm looking forward to where we go there. Counsel, I ask Vice Mayor Ward, I believe you have a question?
Yes, my question is the African-American cemetery.
Yes, sir.
Let's see the governor pass that, be good for that. I want to know when, where, and how, or how we supposed to know or get this money for these cemeteries.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, do you want to, you look like you may want to respond to that question.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, as we've discussed a few times, is, we've got to apply for that. We've got to have a identified location, and we have their process to go through, and there's a certain, I think, timetable to that each year, I believe.
Right. I think the process is, Mr. Mayor, the program is up and running. There's criteria and a way to submit an application to receive those fundings, that that funding and part of that, of course, as the manager shared, involves selecting a site. And so I think where that stands now is staff is working to develop that proposal. And having addition, the reason why having the additional funding is important is because it's a bigger pot, and so to the extent there is competition for that money, there's more money, which increases our chances at securing some of that once we've gone through that whole process at the local level.
Okay, so Al, I had to talk to you more about deeper than, okay, all right, thank you.
Of course.
Counsel, any other questions or comments before we move on? Good night. Thank you, Ms. Carlin, and at this time, it's my pleasure to call Senator Jordan to the podium for her comments.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. How are you?
Good afternoon, fine, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, I always think the best way to start the day is with a little bit of good news. So I will give you some live, up-to-date good news that just happened about 20 minutes ago that we can now announce. The governor and several of our stakeholders just announced that Suffolk will receive $3 million through Virginia Housing about 20 minutes ago for the Phase 2 portion of Peanut Crossing, just about a half mile from here, to support additional workforce housing. We talk about that a lot, and so I'm very pleased to be able to share that formally with those in the room and those who are listening and the council. So that's great news, so I want to start with a little bit of good news. So just bringing, I guess, good tidings and cheer to start off. So it was an interesting year in the General Assembly, so over 3,100 bills that came through, about 1,800 or so that made it to the governor's desk, about 150 either line item amendments or vetoes, and we concluded April 2nd with the veto session, and now we proceed forward into, I know the fast and furious nature of getting ready and gearing up for next year. I can't believe we're already saying that. But I want to go at a couple of the things that I worked on this year and some things that I think we need to be forward-thinking about as a body for next year. First, I think we all know because they are year priorities, secured $750,000 for Camp Community College for the Workforce Trades and Innovation Center, which is great. I see that progress coming along, and Camp Community College is doing an incredible job in being a community partner with all of us to make sure that we can train up the next generation of workforce. So I'm very pleased to see that, and I, I hope and pray that each and every year that they are seeking an opportunity and partnership with you all, that you will be glad to help champion their cause. So thank you also for adding that to your agenda. It makes a huge difference. We also were able to work on the Western Tidewater Home Shelter that's gonna be on Purtin Boulevard in Suffolk, which I see as well underway and under construction, and very pleased to see because I know there's a need. But I want to talk a little bit about the mental health side, a little bit of some of the things that kind of go hand in hand with that. This year, I carried a bill that dealt with psychiatric EDs or emergency departments. I worked with the Hospital and Healthcare Association to come up with some very thoughtful legislation because we often know that our police officers and sheriff's deputies for localities that have the image of primary law enforcement spend an inordinate amount of time in our hospitals awaiting turnover in between when someone is experiencing a mental health crisis or break and they're under an ECO or TDO. What this bill sought to do is to make sure that the physical bed that is in a hospital does not have to be an emergent bed in the sense of being in ER, but as long as a hospital has a safe and secure facility and turnover is allowable. We see many hospitals going into almost a behavioral health unit, that it does not have to be a physical bed in that sense to be utilized before the turnover. That's a change that we made in the law to allow our hospitals flexibility, to make sure that once that citizen is safe and they are turned over to the appropriate caretaker, that our law enforcement can get back to the road and reduce really the turnaround times if they're driving, you know, several hours away to be able to seek out a bed. And so I hope that goes a long way in making sure we can reduce our turnaround time for law enforcement and make our ECO and TDO process more efficient. The governor signed that into law, and that will take effect July 1 of this year. I also worked after some personal experiences, talking with many mothers across the Commonwealth, additional bill for hospital and healthcare systems on maternal health. We have so many women, including myself actually last year, that experienced proclampsia. I ended up back in the hospital and almost not here before you tonight. So, you know, it was a wake-up call to really learn more about that process. So I worked with stakeholders on both sides of the aisle to make sure that we came up with additional safety bundles and checks in our hospital setting, especially with OB healthcare providers. So that way, women are getting all of the resources that they need, so that way we can hopefully avoid, you know, higher rates of mortality. Over the past three years, each year between 40 and 80 women, give or take how they record that data, have unfortunately passed because of, you know, mortality rates surrounding maternal health, and that is just really unconscionable in today's day and age and healthcare. And so we're gonna be working also on a measure and data quality dashboard to make sure we're tracking across the state equitably where those people live, what that event is, and have better data to make better, more informed decisions in the future. Also this year, I was proud to carry the banning of eight harmful food dyes in schools, for K through 12 schools that will have a delayed year enactment. And we are the second state in the nation that passed that, and will go into effect July 1 for the law and next year for our schools. It'll give them some time to adjust to that and as they're going through their purchasing, to make sure that all of the items that they're purchasing meet those standards and quality measures. It's really kind of unconscionable that it took this long, I must tell you, because in 1990, the FDA banned Red Number 3 in cosmetics. We won't put it in our face, but we still put it in children's tummies, and so I was very, very pleased with that dye, along with seven others will be banned as of next year in K through 12 school food. Our kids need to start their school day with the best foot forward and the clearest mind, and I think this will go a long way to helping to solve that issue. Want to talk a little bit about, we talked a little bit about road funding and infrastructure. Couple things first, I was honored to work with this council last year, that we worked to secure the $30 million out of the Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund to work at the 460-58 confluence to work on traffic mitigation. As we go forward and we're identifying some of those priorities, I hear you loud and clear when it comes to secondary roads and the issues that we have to address. I will tell this council this, though, I look at the SmartScale rating system went into effect long before any of us in this room, or, well, some of us in this room, I think, were not elected, but neither was I in 2013 when SmartScale went into effect. I think it's an inherently flawed system. I think that it did not ever think to prioritize secondary roads, and I think long-term for Virginia and those that have a high number of secondary roads that are primary to us really in our usage, especially for, you know, agriculture, everyday travel, large equipment, interstate commerce, things of that nature, we're going to have to make major wholesale adjustments statewide, not just in our local transportation planning organization, to prioritize funding to SmartScale for our secondary roads. We talked about this a couple of years ago, when we talked about evacuation routes, and I'm gonna be revisiting that conversation and bringing in some data researchers and stakeholders to make that case. I'm gonna also be reaching out to all the localities and the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization to have them hopefully sign letters of support, which I hope you'd all encourage your colleagues in those localities to do so, to speak with one voice on making sure we address this inequity in our road rating system for transportation. You know, adding something to the gas tax may help with a little pot of money, but long-term, we are going to have to make it a priority from the top of the scale, which is SmartScale, and add that in. We know that as things have been approved in the city and we're fast-growing, SmartScale didn't really speak to the needs that we had. Economic development accounts for less than 5%, safety accounts for less than 10%. Congestion is a small part as well, and we need to make sure that that works for all localities. If we're not meeting the traffic count needs, our secondary roads are still just as busy, and we need to make sure that we can fund those. So it'll be my intention next year to offer legislation to tinker with SmartScale and get the support of HRTPO to work on that. So I hear you on that loud and clear. Also, I believe that part of that conversation is making sure that our emergency evacuation routes are at the forefront. We know that Suffolk is a great place for people to call home, and we also know if someone has to evacuate, they're coming through 58 and 460 and probably up Route 10. So it's a great place to call home, and I think a lot of people, if they ever had to evacuate, would like to call this their temporary home as they are exiting. And the reality will be that we have to do better about our transportation funding to address the needs of Suffolk, because we will be at the forefront of that process should we have to evacuate. School construction and capacity issues, huge issue and a hard question, I think, to answer. There's, I don't think one way to fully answer how we tackle school construction. I supported the 1% sales tax increase for school boards. That was vetoed. I don't think that's a long-term answer, but for now, I had local houses that requested that, and I was honored to support that. But I will say this, we added $310 million in this year's budget for additional school construction and infrastructure grants. So if there are minor projects, localities can apply for, I would encourage you, if there's something smaller, I would encourage the school boards and you all to have that conversation, if it's your priority, and look into that. We also had what I think probably could be the lifeblood for our future of school construction monies in Virginia, and it was buried into the bill of the Fairfax Casino that I'm sure many of you probably heard about maybe on the news. A large percentage of that would have been a dedicated funding stream to school construction monies that would have been doled out for rural, which Suffolk is still considered rural, and especially urban schools based on the index, and we would have been, I think, very handsomely rewarded. There are very few times that we have the opportunity as our body and this body to be able to take a couple of dollars from Northern Virginia, and I was not only honored to support that, very happy to be able to candidly take a dollar from maybe Northern Virginia to support our infrastructure. Before the transportation lockbox was created back in 2013, I think that they probably raided some dollars from down here for transportation for a long time coming, so I think that's only the least they could do in a fair trade-off. That bill will come, it made it through the Senate, it was killed in the House, unfortunately, and I hope we will see it next year. I'll gladly vote for it as long as it has that school construction, infrastructure in it that will come back to our localities. So I think long-term, that could be a great opportunity for us to get meaningful dollars, not just a drop in the bucket each year. Also, in regards to some of the things I think that we talk about in infrastructure, I secured additional $6 million for what's called the preno street upgrade for sewer and water infrastructure. That is with our, our partners in Portsmouth. This was a shared priority, and we were able to secure that money to make sure that our infrastructure will be upgraded and in good working order for years to come. So I was pleased to carry that. Looking forward to '26. One of the things I feel like we have to really think about from an educational perspective is we talk a ton about workforce. We also have to talk about the flexibility of career and technical education in our high school setting. Younger people are making decisions much earlier than they used to, especially about their post-secondary opportunities, and so working to add more flexibility into our graduation requirements for career and technical education is gonna be at the top of my list for next year, so I just wanted to briefly highlight that. Making sure that we are working on CTE pathways and working on our workforce that directly is driving the economy here is gonna be of utmost importance. I just wanted to touch real quick, too. We talked about E911 dispatchers and where that bill is at, and I feel like I can probably answer that pretty well. So before I went to the Senate, I served in the House, and I was the Chair of the Virginia Retirement and Compensation Subcommittee on Appropriations. Initially, this is a piece of legislation I've always supported. At the time, the first barrier, if you will, because I heard the whack-a-mole comment, and it's very spot-on, the initial concern was that localities and state police did not have the equitable standards that were the same to be able to classify employees on the same working level. And so we gave all the stakeholders from VACO, state police, and VML a year to come up with the baseline standard. That way, we could quantify the number of employees that would affect in that year. It doesn't seem like that work was done. We came back the next year, filed the bill, it got pushed forward again, it got sent to a work group where that was highlighted as a top priority. The only thing that was glaring in the J-Lark report that members on Senate Finance talked about, which I do not serve on as a concern, is that the lower physical nature in that report of that role. But I would say that our dispatchers work hard. They answer phone calls and talk with citizens at their darkest hour, and I can't even imagine the level of stress and probably post-traumatic stress that those first responders go through in dealing with our citizens in their darkest moment. So I vehemently disagreed with that assessment. But those in Senate Finance did say this, is they are trying to figure out, this is the next step, they're trying to figure out how we do multipliers for several in the hazardous duty area for multiple different styles of first responders in that community. I was assured that this is something I think we're gonna answer the call and get squared away next year, and I'm gonna make sure we, you know, hold some feet to the fire to make sure we can get that finalized and wrapped up with a bow next session. One of the things also that was announced last year was the Office of First Responder Wellness. I think that's also additional resource as we are trying to- I think that's also additional resource as we are trying to close the gap in helping our first responders, whether it be firefighters, paramedics, law enforcement, or our dispatchers in handling the really, really tough things that come across their desk each and every single day. So as those things get up and rolling, that's a resource I'll be glad to share with this locality and so many others to make sure that we can put out additional resources for our first responders. Two last things, and I won't go too, too deep, but there was just a lot to cover this year. I'm sure many people heard, and I represent 10 localities. I go from Portsmouth, Suffolk, Alawite, a little bit of Chesapeake, Franklin, Southampton, Brunswick, Greensville, Emporia, and the bottom half of Dinwiddie County. I'll be going to Brunswick after this to speak with the Board of Supervisors. So if I slip out, I apologize. But they just had over 550 jobs lost outside of Emporia that directly relate to industries that we have here, which is in ag and forestry. It's going to have a monumental impact, not just on that tiny locality there with, you know, 4700 residents and 550 jobs, but it's going to have a lasting impact on the agriculture and forestry industry that we have just right around here in our backyard. Land values will probably be affected for those that are seeking to clear timber. Our logging community is going to be affected by that. Our sawmill operators will be affected by that. And ultimately, some of our other partners in that forestry industry will be affected. And so I've already started a listing tour with loggers, landowners, sawmill operators, and those employees to respond to that. And I just want to share that this affects, this part of Virginia is known as the wood basket. I know we see ourselves just as peanuts, but forestry is still a very large part of our industry right here in our own backyard as well. And so as we answer that call, we're going to make sure that we are shoring up the other legs of the stool that hold up that industry to make sure that we don't have a collapse like other states have recently seen. It's our ag and forestry is our number one and number three economy in Virginia. It needs to stay that way. And so I'm going to be working on innovations in that space to make sure we can answer that call and maybe work on opportunity expansion. One of those pieces next year I'll be working on is coming up with renewable energy and clean energy information, especially in regards to biomass. So many major employers actually use woodchips and sawdust and other pieces of that tree for energy, clean energy opportunity. And so I'm going to be looking deep into that issue to see if we can not only answer those lost jobs, but grow that industry and maybe find some additional supporting industries, maybe here, a home in Suffolk, Virginia, who knows? So long-term, that will be one of the things I will be working on. Last but not least, rural healthcare and pharmacy access. Next year, we've seen a lot of pharmacies across rural Virginia close. And that's something we're going to be answering the call for. We'll be working hopefully with the Board of Pharmacy and promulgating regulation to work on delivery service in rural areas and pickup and drop-off service that meets federal and state requirements. That is in, you know, a working process right now as I talk with different people in smaller communities. But especially with our seniors, they're not as apt to want to use mail-order opportunities in our communities, and that's just the reality. And so we have to answer that call of how we get those folks access, especially to medication. And last but not least, I am honored to serve as a Vice Chair for the Rural Center of Virginia Board and the Chair of the Rural Caucus. And we just rolled out at the Southwest Virginia Economic Forum, a new resource that will serve all of Virginia. And Suffolk is still considered in the rural footprint. Some people forget that, I think, because we're so fast-growing. But the new Rural Opportunity Dashboard was created with myself and Brian David at UVA Weldon Cooper Center, and then also Liz Povar, who does consulting in the economic development space, along with some of our colleagues on the Rural Center Board. The goal of this is very, very interesting. It's for rural areas, for businesses, and our local elected officials and the community alike to find different resources that we share and house it in one space. We know that Suffolk is unique in its own right. We have so many more resources that we're rich in that other places don't have. Just people might look at us differently. If you put Suffolk and Virginia Beach on the same sheet of paper, they might seem to have on a typical demographic worksheet, they might look a little bit better in certain areas. But the reality is, we have water, we have land, we have economic prosperity, we have confluence of broadband and interstate access and other things that make us well more attractive, I would say, to prospective businesses. And so what the Rural Opportunity Dashboard will seek to do will identify healthcare access opportunities, broadband coverage maps, economic mobility opportunities, infrastructure quality for each and every locality down to zip code level. And also, it will allow data-informed decisions for our local bodies as well. It will source all available grant and funding opportunities that your locality may be able to apply for, or maybe nonprofits that could tie into a locality and bring a business to a locality. My hope is that we will see economic development spurred from this opportunity, and I'm very happy to have been a part of that. And I hope for the future of this locality and many others that it will be another great tool in the toolbox to tell a better story about our city. So with that, I would, do you want us to hold for questions? Or?
Yeah, I think that'd probably be the way to go. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Senator Jordan? Hearing none. Well, thank you very, very much for your information, lots of it, and thank you for all your efforts this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel.
At this time, it is my pleasure to invite Delegate Nadarius Clark to the podium for comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Members of Council. Just getting my notes. I will try to be brief, but I do have a few pages to go through today. We had a busy session this year. We had a productive session. And I know some of our successes has already been mentioned today. So I won't harp on them too much, but I wanted to just go over some of the legislation that I was able to get through across the finish line. Again, I am the Nadarius Clark Delegate representing the 84th District, which is parts of Chesapeake, Suffolk, Franklin, and Alawite County. So that's Windsor, Carisville, Smithfield, and a piece of Carrollton. And this year, we got a few bills to the Governor's desk, starting with HB 1700. That's our bleeding control kits in our public schools. We saw in the state that there was no continuity on bleeding control kits. Some localities had it, some localities couldn't. But sadly, you know, if any tragedy happened, if a stabbing or a shooting or any accident happened at school, all of our schools had no way of making sure we had plans and programs in place and the tools in those schools to stop the bleed. And we know that bleed-out time normally is about five to seven minutes, and normally it takes about seven to 10 minutes for our medical professionals to get to our public schools. So that bill has been signed into law, and now it will be up to our school boards to implement those programs and get those bleeding control kits into our schools. So I'm glad that we got that through, working with the College of Surgeons. Next was HB 2174, was one for malpractice. We saw in Virginia, this was a cleanup bill to go back to help estate planning when it comes to third-party malpractice, to make sure that we're protecting folks that's going through those plannings. HB 2179, Virginia Investment Performance Grants. This would directly help the city of Suffolk. Cities that's experiencing double distress localities such as Suffolk, which has a high poverty and a high rate of unemployment, can now receive grants through the Virginia Investment Performance Grant at a lower threshold. So now, when it comes to paying the prevailing wage for those grants. So that will become, will create easy access for more grants and more economic development to come into Suffolk. Next was HB 2673, 2613, I'm sorry. This was for child abuse and neglect. We see in Virginia, as we are modernizing our law around marijuana, to make sure that parents aren't being, having their children taken away just for having the use of marijuana. Now, if there's neglect, if there's abuse, then of course, we want the judge to do what's right. But we don't want children being taken away from their parents just because they are obtaining a legal substance, even if it's things such as the drugs that you're using to get off of drugs. You know, somebody is experiencing an addiction and they're taking the prescribed drug by their doctor. We don't want them to go to jail or to get their children taken away because they are actually doing the right thing and trying to, you know, fight that addiction. So we don't want that to be the only reason why people are being taken away from their family. Next was HB 1619, the E-911 bill. We know that that has been brought back a few years now to the General Assembly. We saw some movement this year. And really, what the hangup that we saw was, the first year, it was the state police said we want to slice up this as well. They said we want to be able to have these benefits. So this year, we actually made sure they had their own bill, because we made sure this bill was for localities. And that was, they were happy to get the bill, but both bills died because it was some money issues as well. But we're going to continue to fight for that. We know sometimes we just have to keep bringing bills back, working them out, ironing them out to make sure we can get them across the finish line, such as my medical debt bill that got signed into law last year. We had no statute of limitations on medical debt if you occurred that at state-funded hospitals. So we got it through on the third year. Last year, the governor signed it into law. And now that debt is capped at three years, that the hospital will come after you. Because before, we saw 40, 50 years later that you're getting a lien or a garnishment out against you for a lifesaving procedure that you had decades ago. So we was, I was happy to put a stop to that practice here in Virginia. Next was HB 2175. This was to allow localities to create an anti-rank gouging board. We see in Virginia, we have a housing crisis. We're about 500,000 homes short in Virginia. And we want to make sure that we have a tool and a tool belt to our localities to say if we're seeing bad landlords or bad actors raising rent 30, 40, 50, we even seen some cases in Virginia, 100%, but yet, no improvements have happened. And, you know, we have some lords sadly that do exist in our communities. And we want to make sure that we're getting rid of those bad actors. And this board will be able to meet with those folks. It would be created by the council if they so choose to do so. It's just a local option to put the tool in the toolbox to make sure that we're combating bad actors when it comes to our housing sector. Wanted to go into some budget items. Budget item 125, number 8H, appropriates approximately $134 million. That's in a one-time $1,000 bonuses to all teachers and support staff. And that should be coming through, starting next month. Our teachers should start to fill that in their paychecks. Was happy to get that through. And that came through as the last two years, I've been pushing for teacher pay to the national average or above. Right now, our teachers are still paid below the national average. We got the formula straight last year. We got it to the Governor, and sadly, it was vetoed. This year, we tried to do it again. We pretty much knew it was going to get vetoed again. So we said, how else can we help our teachers? We was able to get this $134 million in the budget to make sure that they can get the raises that they deserve. But I will definitely be continuing to push for it, teacher pay to the national average or above, to make sure our teachers are getting paid what they deserve. We also have $2.5 million budget item, number 277, number 1H, appropriates $2.5 million for mobile maternal health clinics to be in the 84th District. So that's primarily in Franklin, Alawite, and the rural areas of Suffolk. This is primarily to help our rural healthcare deserts that we're seeing when it comes to maternal health. We know a lot of times, you know, folks in those more rural places have to drive so far. They may not have access to, you know, that care. So these units that will come online next year, it's slated to be appropriated, starting July 1 of next year, that this money and resources will be coming to our community. So I will be working with ODU and also VUL for the data and the collection, because this will be a pilot program. And hopefully, this will be able to be successful and we can roll this out all throughout the Commonwealth. But it will start right here in Suffolk, in our rural communities. All right, now I'm going to go to my next page. We also had HB 32. This was for implicit bias and cultural competency in our healthcare, primarily in our maternal health. We know that maternal mortality is higher sadly for black and brown mothers and black and brown children. So we wanted to make sure that we are training all of our healthcare providers that's working in those places to make sure that they understand, you know, the biases that exist and that they are aware of them. So hopefully, we can try to cure some of these datas in the mortality rate of black and brown mothers and black and brown children. HB 34, that was the collection of medical debt that was signed into law last year. HB 35, for firearm safety device tax credit. We see time and time again, we're having an uptick of gun violence. I'm happy to be the Chairman of Firearms in the House and also the Co-Chair of the Gun Violence Prevention Caucus for the General Assembly. We was very, we moved a lot of legislation last year when I became Co-Chair. Over 30 bills we passed and got to the Governor. Sadly, only about two of them was actually signed into law, and one of them happened to be mine. And that was for a firearm locking device tax credit. So if you do, if you're a good actor and you go out and buy a firearm, before, it was only if you had the locking box. So now, if you have anything that locks your firearm, if you have a trigger lock, if you have any biometric lock, any type of lock that will secure that gun and your firearm in your home, now you can receive a tax credit for it as a way to promote good actors when it comes to gun safety. Next, we had our law officers retirement systems. I was happy to fight for our firefighters with the Department of Military Affairs. They was not receiving the same enhanced retirement benefits as all of our other firefighters. So I was able to secure that funding in our budget to make sure now, every firefighter that is employed through Department of Military Affairs now will have enhanced retirement benefits when they serve in Virginia. Next was HB 1473. This is around fentanyl education and awareness. This bill went live last year to, in a sense, a one-pager to all of our students in high schools to inform them of the danger of fentanyl. We see time and time again that fentanyl is becoming an increasingly dangerous killer in our community. It takes 0.02% of a gram to be lethal. It's colorless, it's odorless, and it's, you know, it's hurting our community. So now, we have a way to at least inform our students and inform our parents of that this, you know, exists in our community, to be aware of it, and hopefully, we can save some lives by having this education go out every year to our students. Wanted to talk about the guardrails on the speed camera. I know Delegate Seabode was the champion for that bill. She was putting it forward. We went to 8, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night sometime in our caucus meetings, debating this very bill, and all eyes was always on me because I'm here to represent Suffolk. And my concern, again, with them, because they were concerned about predatory practices and things like that. So I was happy that we did reach an agreement and we was able to alleviate some of their concerns. But I can guarantee that they, that this bill will be back again. So I would love to work with council and work with Mindy to make sure that, you know, we can protect Suffolk and make sure that these monies stay in Suffolk so we can do great things with it. But of course, you know, would love to, you know, be the devil's advocate there. Don't mind going to war for Suffolk. Next was, and looking at that, because we was talking about the license plate readers, and I wanted to talk about our fusion centers and how our community sometimes is surveyed. I had a bill to make sure that we're protecting our whistleblowers. We do have fusion centers in Virginia. And the fusion center's job is to basically, you know, I don't want to say spy, but basically, you know, keep up with what's going, going with our constituents, with folks in our communities to prevent crime. But if any bad actors are happening, or if any misbehavior is happening, there is no protection for someone to say, hey, somebody's actually violating someone's rights. So I wanted, so my bill was to actually protect the whistleblower. If they see, you know, bad behavior happening in our fusion centers that is meant to protect us, that they can, you know, let someone know and then not have to be, you know, hurt in a legal manner. All right. Just want to make sure I hit everything. Oh, HR, the Hampton Roads Highway Resilience Program, HB 2466. That is a bill that myself and Delegate Glass would definitely be bringing back. I know, I'm glad we have a blueprint now. I think next year going in, we will have some more wiggle room to really bake this cake to get it in a good place. So I would love to work with you all there to make sure that we can make sure our infrastructure and our roads are benefiting from this program. Last, I did want to mention, I wanted to touch on the, what's happening with our federal workforce and funding reductions, and how that may affect the state and localities as some of these policies are changing. So Speaker Scott has created a special select committee to tackle this very issue. And the main functions of this committee is to collect and analyze data on the cuts of the federal workforce, access to economic and budgetary impacts to Virginia, engage with stakeholders to understand the concerns, and also provide policy recommendations. They already started meeting. Their first meeting was February 22. They're planning to meet again next month, actually in Norfolk. And from that first meeting, we did get some data that about 9.8% of Virginia's workforce are federal workers. In Hampton Roads, 10.5% of our workforce are federal workers. So one-third of the state funding is supported by federal funding. So when we talk about schools... So when we talk about school education funding and Medicaid, Medicare funding, these will drastically affect how our hospitals and our clinics and things are funded, how we pay for our school lunch programs, and how that trickles down. We will definitely have to go to the drawing board to reallocate some funding. 10% of local revenue comes from federal funding. The committee, like I mentioned, will be meeting next month in June, and we will be having a special section coming up sometime in September. We're still working that out to hopefully be able to see what effects have taken place and what effects we can implement to counter those measures coming down from the federal government. And just to put that in some numbers, if we look at a 1% reduction in our federal workforce, that's 1,800 jobs. If we look at a 5% reduction, that's 9,000 jobs. And if we look at a 10%, that's 18,000. When we look at that, and that's just for civilian jobs. If you look at the total state employee jobs from a 1% to 10%, you're talking about up to 40,000 jobs for a total of almost 60, well, 58,000 jobs to be exact lost throughout the state because of this cut. And we, that trickles down to GDP loss at 1% that, in billions, this is .6 billion dollars that we will lose in GDP. At a 5% loss, it's $3 billion we will lose in 6 billion at a 10% reduction. And on the total state revenue loss, at a 10% reduction, we're talking about at a $247.9 million, and that 1% reduction will be at about $25 million loss. So any cut in any way, shape, or form from the federal government will hurt how we do things here in Virginia, and it will definitely trickle down to our locality. So we do just want to be mindful of these things taking place and coming through so we can be steadfast and take care and protect our community. And to close out, just for future legislation that I wanted to highlight, we'll be definitely working on legislation around gun violence prevention. We'll be having our Gun Violence Prevention Summit that I'll lead in August with legislators and stakeholders around the country that we'll be having in Richmond. We'll be, I'll be tackling issues around housing, environmental protections. I had a few bills this year around dumping and protecting our waterways, and I will definitely be bringing some of those back to see how we can work with DEQ and make sure that everyone is following the right protocols when it's, when we're protecting our water. Looking at workforce development, I'm so happy that we was able to secure that money as well. Ag, supporting our farmers, supporting our agricultural land. I've been able to meet with a couple of farmers here in Suffolk to hear their issues, and I'm excited to get back to Richmond to create some legislation out of it. Education, continuing to fight for our school constructions, and also our mental health, making sure. We did have therapeutic day treatment programs cut out of our public schools last year, and we're still waiting for our providers to find out what is going to replace these programs that has been gutted out of our schools when it comes to mental health support. So, you know, I've been kind of having a little battle with them because we're taking resources away from our students when it comes to mental health, and we have not supplemented that back yet. And we know with what's happening, you know, our students are just going through so much coming out of COVID and seeing, you know, the gun violence, you know, and having, you know, school shooting drills. And when I talk to our students, you know, the school shooting drills don't make them feel safe. It makes them feel more aware that at any time, someone may can bring a gun in there and harm them. So we want to make sure that our students can focus on learning and being in a learning environment and not about, you know, a school shooting. Public safety, making sure that we can support our fire departments, our police officers, our sheriffs, and all of our public safety officials, but also not forgetting about our seniors, making sure that we put money into senior care, working with the Senior Services of Southampton Roads, making sure that we're taking care of our folks there, and also childcare. I don't have a child, but I know that's like having a second mortgage, so making sure that, you know, we can make sure we have programs there for childcare in our communities. But again, I can talk all day, but I think I have said enough. But definitely wanted to open it up to any questions. I do have copies here. I put it on the wrong letterhead today, so I'll be emailing it to you. Keegan will make sure I get y'all a copy of that, the federal overview of those cuts as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Delegate Clark. Now, council members, any questions or comments from Delegate Clark? Okay. If not, thank you very much. And I would like to say that personally, I feel very fortunate to have the ability to work with both Senator Jordan and Delegate Clark. They've always been available, receptive, and have the best interests of Suffolk at heart. And I think as a city, that we are grateful for that representation that you provide and your advocacy, being the advocate for our citizens, always. That collaboration and efforts are recognized and appreciated. And thank you both for being here this evening. Thank you both for everything you do during the year and everything you do every day on behalf of the citizens of Suffolk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of council.
Very welcome. Now, due to time constraints, looking at the clock, I would like to suggest that a motion be made to move our summer events presentation to the special presentation section of our regular session. With that being said, Councilman Johnson?
So moved.
And a motion from Councilman Johnson to do so. Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wright. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
I will do, oh, there it goes. Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no need for a closed meeting this evening, so this work session stands adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.